Good morning. We're going to get started with an invocation led by Chaplain Bill Simpson, representing Integris Health Southwest Medical Center, and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Barbara Peck. Please stand as you are able. Please join me in prayer. God, as we gather this morning, just a single day removed from the official celebration, we give thanks for the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who challenged us all to confront uncomfortable truths about ourselves. Throughout his history, this nation has been blessed with leaders who have given of themselves to confront challenges, both without and within. So again, God, as we gather here this morning, we give thanks. Today, we give special thanks for the members of this city council, for Mary Holt, and for others assembled here to carry on the work of this city we call home. Bless their efforts and honor their willingness to serve. Give them wisdom and skill, and give them compassion. Compassion for one another and for every last resident of this city. And we ask these things, God, in the name of the One who called us to serve each one, including the very least of these. Amen. All right, I call this regular meeting of the city council to order, and we have some presentations and resolutions from the office of the mayor, and I will make my way to the front for that. Okay, Krista, why don't you join me at the front here? Well, today is the day we recognize our employees, not just of the month, but of the entire year of 2023. And today, we are honored to recognize Krista Snyder as our City Employee of the Year, and I would ask the clerk to read this resolution so we can learn a little bit more about Krista.
Whereas Krista Snyder has been a city employee for six years and is a forensic scientist in the DNA laboratory of the Oklahoma City Police Department. And whereas Krista Snyder conducts forensic DNA testing on criminal cases, from burglaries to complex homicide cases, testifies in court as an expert witness to scientific principles, participates in rapid DNA screening of sexual assault cases, assists in the implementation of new scientific technologies, and teaches non-scientific personnel about DNA technology. And whereas Krista Snyder functions in an overstressed and fast-moving laboratory, taking on new and complex challenges even under pressure. And whereas Krista Snyder works on a high volume of cases that affect people in tragic ways, and her dedication to each case ensures those investigations have the highest level of scientific support. And whereas Krista Snyder is one of the only employees in the laboratory with expertise in criminal paternity cases, playing a vital role in resolving cases and assisting high-profile cases when they need DNA identification. And whereas Krista Snyder helped the laboratory become the first in Oklahoma to test every sexual assault case, and has carried a high caseload responsibility well beyond her specified duty. And whereas Krista Snyder possesses a sincere positivity that radiates into the workplace, which helps support her peers and community. And whereas this council desires to recognize Krista Snyder for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the City of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City, that they do hereby thank and commend Krista Snyder, 2023 South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Year.
Thank you. And as of later this month, you will actually have been an employee for eight years. We're going to call that a Scrivener's error, but Amy, you did a great job reading it. Thank you so much. Krista, thank you so much for your service. This is a great testament to that work. We'd love to hear a few words from you. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm a bit nervous, so I'll try not to stumble through my words. I just want to say thank you to South Kiwanis for choosing me as Employee of the Year. I know there are a lot of really hardworking people that work for the city, so I'm honored to be here. Thank you to my supervisor for nominating me, and thank you, a shout-out to my family for braving the colds to be here. They are my biggest supporters. I don't think that people realize what it takes to get a DNA profile. It's more than just a sample through the DNA analysis process. There's a lot of moving parts to it, and it takes a really good team to do that, and we really have like the best DNA lab team that there is. So I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Yes, it's here for Krista. Now, hold on, hold on. This is actually a resolution, so we have to pass this first. So we probably shouldn't have gotten too excited too early because there's still a chance this could go south. So let's see if we get, we get a motion and a second. Cast your votes. I wish to vote aye. All right, passes unanimously. You are the Employee of the Year. Congratulations. Thank you. All right, why don't we bring Major Jones up? This is our firefighter of the year. I'll meet you over here. Make it, mix it up. All right. Well, Major Lance Jones, we would like to learn a little bit more about you, and so I would ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Major Lance Jones, a dedicated and exemplary member of the Oklahoma City Fire Department, has demonstrated outstanding commitment and service throughout his 19-year tenure. And whereas Major Jones has exhibited exceptional leadership and initiative in the development of the Overdose Response Program, a crucial initiative aimed at addressing the opioid addiction crisis in our community. And whereas Major Jones has forged a collaborative partnership with the Hope Community Foundation to create a comprehensive program targeting the most vulnerable population affected by opioid addiction. And whereas the Overdose Response Program, under Major Jones's guidance, focuses on ensuring that individuals facing opioid addiction can connect to the appropriate resources for treatment and long-term care. And whereas the program includes an overdose response team, expertly trained and led by Major Jones, which promptly responds to overdose incidents in the field, connecting patients to essential services and providing compassionate care for the families involved. And whereas Major Jones has implemented a proactive approach by equipping the overdose response team with Leave Behind overdose kits, which include critical tools such as fentanyl test strips and Narcan for overdose treatment. And whereas Major Jones, drawing upon his extensive training as an EMT paramedic and RN, has consistently demonstrated a deep commitment to making a positive impact in the lives of those affected by opioid addiction. And whereas this council desires to recognize and commend Major Lance Jones for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the City of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City, that they do hereby thank and commend Major Lance Jones, 2023 South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Firefighter of the Year.
Thank you. Well, Major Jones, we're so grateful for your service to the people of Oklahoma City for two decades, and we're grateful at the opportunity to be able to honor you this morning. We'd love to hear a few words. If you'd like, the floor is yours.
First off, I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council and city manager for the opportunity to be here. Chief Kelly gave me this opportunity to oversee this team. It's been a very humbling experience one day when Mayor Holt said that we were the 20th largest city in the United States. It's like, I get to work for a city of this stature, but we still have the opportunity to go out and find individuals. We've been funded to go out and just meet the needs of the people out there that are suffering, but not only the people that are in addiction, but also the families that they affect. So we're doing a lot for as many people, as much collateral damage as we can try to control. And like I said, hopefully we can make y'all proud, and I very honor to work for this department. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you absolutely make us proud. Let's show that pride right now. Now, as before, this is a resolution, so let's see if we can get a motion in a second. We can. Please cast your votes. I wish to vote aye. All right, passes unanimously. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Major, this is yours. And finally, Master Sergeant Rogers. Please join me up here. Master Sergeant Rogers is the Police Officer of the Year, and we would love to learn a little bit more about you, so I would ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Master Sergeant Michael Rogers has been a city employee for 22 years in the Oklahoma City Police Department. And whereas Master Sergeant Rogers serves in a supportive role, ensuring patrol officers, investigators, command, and executive staff have the tools and equipment necessary to address the community's immediate needs efficiently. And whereas Master Sergeant Rogers accepts tasks selflessly without hesitation, and is known as someone who will get things done without coveting the spotlight. And whereas Master Sergeant Rogers worked tirelessly during the COVID-19 pandemic as the nation was dealing with supply shortages, and was able to supply the department's nearly 1,500 employees with safety equipment. And whereas Master Sergeant Rogers also invests his personal time in the community through outreach and police relations programs, like the Police Athletic League After School Mentor Program that serves children in South Oklahoma City, adding new elements such as chess, guitar lessons, and mental health checkups to the program. And whereas Master Sergeant Rogers sacrifices his personal time to secure donations and arrange resources for the Police Athletic League program, and his dependability and trustworthiness are a perfect example of how the community and the police department can work together to solve problems and facilitate healthy lives for our most vulnerable residents. And whereas Master Sergeant Rogers is a jack-of-all-trades who embodies the police department's core values of integrity, compassion, accountability, respect, and equity. And whereas this council desires to recognize Master Sergeant Michael Rogers for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the City of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City, that they do hereby thank and commend Master Sergeant Michael Rogers, 2023 South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Police Officer of the Year.
Well, thank you, Master Sergeant Rogers, for your incredible service across, as it said, you're a jack-of-all-trades across many forums. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We would love to hear a few words from you. If you so desire, the floor is yours.
Let's see. I wasn't really sure why I was nominated, so let me double-check. I just, I'm honored to get up every day and work for the City of Oklahoma City. It's an honor to serve the citizens. I grew up here. I've lived here my whole life. I went to South Oklahoma City public schools my whole life, so it's like, I feel like I'm at home, you know, working for the city. And it's great to give back to kids that were in similar situations that I was growing up. So, and to be able to help the kids of the community and being able to help our department and supply them with things they need when they need it. And, you know, it's honor, humbling. You know, I just, I just really just do what God tells me to do every day, and it's led me to this, so I'm just very appreciative for everything. Thank you.
Let's hear it for Master Sergeant Rogers. Well, now, let's see if we can get a motion in a second. All right, we've got that. Cast your votes. I wish to vote aye. Passes unanimously. Congratulations, Master Sergeant. Thank you so much. All right, we just have a few more things on Office of the Mayor. We have items D, E, and F that are appointments to the Building Code Board of Appeals, COTPA, and the Lake Atoka Association. We could take those with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Items are approved unanimously. And then finally, under Office of the Mayor, is a resolution approving travel expenses for me to attend the U.S. Conference of Mayors Winter Leadership Meeting in Santa Barbara in February. And six affirmative votes are required for this approval. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, and with the six required votes. All right, now we're at item four, items from council. There's one item today. This is item 4A. This is a resolution approving travel expenses for council members Nikki Nice, JoBeth Hammond, Bradley Carter, and James Cooper to attend the Innovations and Solutions for Ending Unsheltered Homelessness Conference in March in San Francisco. We could take a motion on that. This also requires six affirmative votes. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously and with the required six affirmative votes. All right, moving on now to item five, City Manager Reports. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, we don't have any reports to present today, just claims and payrolls on, and you can find that on OKC.gov.
All right, thank you. Item six, our Journal of Council Proceedings. We have items A and B. We could take with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item seven, a request for uncontested continuances. There's nothing listed on the agenda. Do you have anything, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, we have several on today, beginning on page nine. Item 11, P1, unsecured structures. All of these items will be stricken from the agenda. Item A, 4201 Cunningham Drive, the owner is secured. Item E, 2129 North Lottie Avenue, the owner is secured. Item H, 4201 Northwest 22nd Street, the owner is secured. Item I, 926 Northwest 23rd Street, the owner is secured. Item L, 3308 Northwest 43rd Street, the owner is secured. And item M, 2900 Southwest 48th Street, the owner is secured. On page 10, on abandoned buildings, all of these items will be stricken. All of them were listed previously, so they'll be stricken for the same reasons as previously listed. Item A, 4201 Cunningham Drive. Item E, 4201 Northwest 42nd Street. Item F, 926...
You just said 42nd. Did you mean 22nd?
22nd, I'm sorry. 4201 Northwest 22nd Street. Item F, 926 Northwest 23rd Street. And item I, 3308 Northwest 43rd Street. That's all the items I have.
All right, thank you. There are no items under eight revocable permits and events, so we'll recess the council meeting. Convene is the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have items A through C, we could take with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OC-MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. We have items A through C, and we have presentations on A and B. Mr. City Manager.
That's correct. A.J. Kirkpatrick, or David Todd, I'm sorry, our MAPS Director, will introduce this item, and then A.J. will give a presentation on these operator agreements.
Good morning, David Todd, MAPS Program Manager. Really happy to be bringing you these two items for operators for two of the facilities for the mental health piece of MAPS 4. I've asked ADG Blatt to help us out with this mental health part of it, so A.J. Kirkpatrick is going to go through a real short presentation to kind of outline each of the operators. So I'd like to turn it over to A.J.
Good morning. So we've been working on this for a few months, and we wanted to give you guys an update on the operator selection process. These are the three categories that we typically help describe that process. First, we advertise the opportunity for the operators, then we go through the selection process, and then finally we go to agreement development. So these are the, the blue arrows are where we expect formal action by the subcommittees, the Citizens Advisory Board of MAPS 4, and then also the city council. So we've already gone through approval and the selection committee involvement, so we're now at this approval memorandum of understanding. Sometimes you'll hear us call that a MOU. So to recap a few things from the RFP that we put out for the operator selection, the crisis centers, the, have a budget with the additional money that was allocated of 12.27 million each. They are intended to care for those experiencing mental health or substance abuse crisis. And we expect that customers may voluntarily admit, but the process usually involves family members, caretakers, law enforcement, and/or local hospitals that are helping direct them to these services. The, you might remember, for those especially that were part of the initial proposals for MAPS 4, that the OKIC, the Oklahoma County Crisis Intervention Center, which is on General Pershing behind the North Care Facility, is viewed as the replicable model that we're trying to copy here. So that is a 16-bed inpatient crisis center, and it has a 20-person recovery area that's sometimes called the URC, or Urgent Recovery Center. So the 20-person area is for those in the first 24 hours of a crisis. And once they're able to get that person at a more manageable state, they will usually move them over into the 16-bed inpatient crisis center where they can stay anywhere from three to five days typically. So in addition to that, we're going to need a secure entry for intake and law enforcement handoff. That's something that we've focused a lot on in our initial conversations with them. They like to have an enclosed outdoor area for the clients to be able to have some time outside during each day, and then a kitchen admin area. The other project that we're going to talk to you today is the Restoration Center. It was really viewed as the hub of our new mental health services moving forward. It is viewed as, it was a 24.5, after the additional MAPS funds, it was 24 and a half million-dollar project. It was expected to include a crisis center, like I described before, that three-to-five-day stay area, meth detox, substance abuse, and other comprehensive services. That's quoting the resolution. And then also, the city was seeking an operating partner capable of managing the entire center, but they were willing to accept partner teams, which is what we ended up getting. So similar to OKIC, the one I was talking about before, but it is expected to have additional, larger facility with a wider spectrum of services, especially for outpatient treatment, those that are beyond their initial crisis that are still needing kind of longer-term care. At that time, there was a lot of discussion of the Bear County and San Antonio Restoration Center as a model, so we've studied that, and we've talked to an individual that was involved in the early part of that. So some additional components that came from those presentations to council, we mentioned medical detox, including from meth, medical assisted treatment for opioids, a medical clinic. This is important, a mobile crisis outreach team, so a home for those outreach teams that are becoming more important for our response, a pharmacy, potentially a public inebriate alternative, and then also wraparound services and case management. So both of the RFPs were expecting the respondents to require to have relevant experience with similar facilities, be able to provide care and services for a broad spectrum of individuals experiencing mental health or substance abuse crisis, and that they have the fiscal and service capacity to operate and manage the centers. They were required to demonstrate they could operate and provide those services, and that they were going to work cooperatively, not only with the city, but with the larger community and our service providers. So we want to make sure that we're getting these operators on board as early as possible because we want them to have as much time as possible to have input into the design of these buildings. We have not yet, we've not officially selected the architects. That will be one of the next steps that you'll see in the next few months. We also, I want to point out, allow them to recommend sites or general areas that they think that these services would be needed. So just a final reminder that in the resolution, the council stated at the time that we should try to prioritize Oklahoma City residents where possible, and that we included the language that construction was conditional on identification of operating funding from a non-municipal source, I said it again, a non-municipal source, and that operating agreements with measurable benchmarks prior to December 31st, 2026. So on the left there is Crisis Center number one. We are bringing forward to you today an MOU with the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services as the operator for Crisis Center number one. And then on the right is Restoration Center, and we are bringing forward in a second action, a MOU with North Care. They have with them on their team also the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse and Variety Care for some of that clinic space. They, this is the anticipated schedule moving forward. We are going to continue to do some additional analysis on sites through the spring of 2024, and we need to bring those architects for the two separate projects forward. I should mention that there is also a fourth piece to the mental health package, and that is the supportive housing, or sometimes called transitional housing. We issued the A and E selection for the Restoration Center to include that housing because it was originally the hope that those could be co-located, that the housing could be somehow co-located with one of these projects. So the architect that will ultimately be selected will be designing both the housing and the Restoration Center. Moving into the summer of this year, we hope to start design on both projects, and then that would take about a year so that we could be in the summer of next year, 2025, starting construction. Crisis Center is a little smaller, so we expect that it will be finished sooner, so that would take us about a year into summer of 2026 for it. And then a few more months later, in the fall of 2026 into 2026, the Restoration Center opening. So that is the broad overview of the MOUs and where we are today. I know we have some representatives in the audience, definitely for the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health. I think we may be getting joined by someone from North Care. I'm looking behind me any minute here. If we have any, somebody back there? Oh, okay. All right, thank you. So certainly they are here to answer any questions you might have, or if you have any questions for me.
Oh, I do. I'm sorry. Well, I'm not apologizing. I have a question. Were we able to, within the MOU, include language about cultural competency? I know I spoke about that on the MAPS 4 Citizens Advisory Board, and I'm just curious if that language exists in there in terms of...
I believe this is one of the earlier ones before you had mentioned that, so I'm not sure if we did. We had some broader topics about that. David, do you want to address anything about that?
We did. I specifically put that in there.
Okay. I couldn't remember if that was the one.
I really, really appreciate you all hearing me on that, Director Todd and A.J. It's critical. I just pulled up the National Alliance on Mental Health, and as they say here, our culture, beliefs, sexual identity, values, race, language, all affect how we perceive and experience mental health conditions. And in fact, cultural differences can influence which treatments, excuse me, coping mechanisms, how that, what those supports look like and how they work for us. Therefore, it is essential for culture and identity to be part of the conversation as we discuss mental health and mental health care. So it wasn't just something I wanted there. It's something that's critical for this to work. So I really, really appreciate that, that effort. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Great work. Exciting progress. All right. Well, if there's no further questions or comments on the PPA agenda, we can adopt items A through C with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, we'll adjourn OCPPA and reconvene as the council. We are now on item nine, the Consent Docket, and we have scheduled presentations for item Y, item Z, and item AD. And is there anything else that a council member wishes to pull out for a separate vote, separate comment, question?
Yes, item E. And item G.
All right. All right. Well, if that's all, we'll start there. Item E, Councilwoman What? Nice.
Yes, I, I just wanted to make mention, I know this had been brought to us previously, and we agreed on, on this project for Oklahoma City's Forgotten Black Communities, where safe spaces, equity, culture, and creativity live, United We Stand Grant Project. So even myself was wondering why it was brought again to us today, but I believe this here is for us to see that this official grant agreement is in place. So I just wanted to make mention of, of why we are seeing this again, and, and also the excitement of being able to record the stories of our communities for this particular project within the area of the river, and understanding a lot of the, the roots of where our African-American community has resided historically, within the fabric of Oklahoma City. So I, I did want to mention that. And, and again, hopefully we'll have more information on when this project will begin, so we can get that out to the general public in our city, so we can have a, a lot of response and to hear the stories about this project. So I'll, I'll leave that there, and I'll go ahead and take up item G. If you don't mind, I'd like to defer that until after we hear the item that is up for consideration, that needs a, a separate vote, and that's item 11A, because they are in conjunction with one another. So I'd rather us take up that business before we vote again on that typology. They work together, they intersect, but at the same time, I am concerned as we work through just that discussion of coming forward, that we are able to go back and, and figure out what we need to do with that.
Yeah, I think we can do that, and that makes some sense. When we adopt the rest of the consent docket, we'll just make note that we are adopting it except for item 9G, and then we'll kind of hang that out there, ready to readdress when we get to the planning item.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, then we'll move now to a presentation on item 9Y. This is a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Maureen Heffernan is here with us this morning and is going to just give, make some quick comments about the allocation of funds. This is a direct allocation from Tax Increment District Number Eight, and is actually going to one of our facilities, to assist one of our facilities, Mary Gardens. And so I'll let Maureen just give the quick comments and presentation of what we're doing with this project.
Thank you. Good morning. We are hoping that you pass our air handling unit request for about a million dollars. And the reason we need that is we renovated the Crystal Bridge, as all of you know. It opened a little over a year ago, and I'm happy to say it's been very successful. It has surpassed our budget expectations in terms of visitorship and revenue generating. We earned almost a million dollars. It was 978 million. And so that has been doing very, very well. What's, the last big investment needed now is to help with this request, so we can help moderate the temperatures inside the Crystal Bridge. As it's grown, it's a beautiful, beautiful attraction, but it gets quite hot in there from spring through fall. So this allocation would help us replace these air handling units, and with that, we could lower the temperature, something like between nine, 14, maybe 15 degrees, varies on humidity levels, and that will allow us to have a much better visitor experience. And especially in July and August, it will still be warm, it just won't be hellish, because it does get quite warm in there. So that's what we're here to ask today. Any questions?
Thank you so much. And next up is the presentation on item Z, another joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust.
Yes, Kenton Soodle with the Alliance for Economic Development is going to present this. This is a combination of funding sources, an allocation of funding sources from TIF II and from economic development. I'll let Kenny present the project.
Good morning, Mayor, Council Kenny Soodle with the Alliance for Economic Development. So as Craig mentioned, today's item is to recommend a $20 million allocation from TIF II and $10 million from other non-TIF funds, which I'll talk about in a moment, to add in a, a total of $30 million to the vertical construction budget for the MAPS4 multipurpose stadium. So that would put, if approved, this would put the total budget at 71 million. So a little bit of background, we're going to show you a couple of slides from some of the original presentations. So just as a reminder, the multipurpose stadium, it was proposed, the original 2019 MAPS4 program, to be a stadium suitable for professional and college soccer, as well as being able to host high school sports, concerts, other events. And there were really two different options presented at that time, back in 2019. Option one, which was a 37 to 42 million dollar option, and, and the, the second option, which was a 67 to 72 million dollar option. So if you want to run to, option one, at the time, what was contemplated was this was approximately an 8,000-seat stadium. You know, it hit all the basics to provide regulation-sized playing surface for, for professional soccer. Here's another rendering that just has, you know, kind of a picture of concerts and things like that. If you'll go to the second option, this was to be a 10,000-seat stadium, add some additional amenities such as potentially shade structures, better stage equipment, things like that. I, I do want to say that, you know, a caveat of between 2019 and now, as with everything in the world, there's been inflation. So it's, you know, we haven't, we're about to go through the design process. I'm going to talk about this in a moment, but it's likely these funds would get us probably somewhere in between the two options, but that will be determined later. Which really leads you to, why are we asking for those funds now? So as, as you may remember, that the original plan of this, for this stadium, there was no provision for land or funding for land, and we have a unique opportunity right now. So the, the team has secured options to purchase property in the producer's co-op area. So there's a very short timeline for them to make this decision on when to purchase this land, and I believe that's early summer that, that has to be done. And, you know, I think as most of us were in their shoes, would want to know, are we going to have a viable professional-level stadium? In, in addition, I think this is a really good thing that, that we could not just provide this funding for the stadium, but also the producer's co-op area is an area that has sat undeveloped for a really long time. And much like other MAPS projects in the past, other city public projects, I really see this as being a public anchor to help spur that development in the area. It also would provide a central downtown location, which would, I think, make this even more attractive for fans, for other events, et cetera. So a couple of things, the 20 million from TIF II, as a reminder, TIF Number Two, the, the downtown TIF expires in 2026. We've looked at this. We do have funding available. The stadium is in the TIF project area, so these funds have to be spent in that area. We believe even after these funds are, if, if approved or provided, we would still probably have somewhere around $20 million left, you know, that council and the Economic Development Trust could make decisions on how to spend those funds on projects, et cetera. The other 10 million would come from the Omni Revenue Stabilization Fund. So as a reminder, back when we did the deal with the Omni Hotel, there were a basket of different revenues that council approved a, a resolution to put all these revenues into a fund, so that that could build up to ensure that we could pay for the debt that was issued for our participation in the Omni project. As part of that resolution, there was a provision that if funds built up over two times the debts, two years' worth of debt service, those funds could be used for other lawful economic development purposes, of which this is one of those such uses. So that fund has done very, very well, has a healthy balance, and the city feels like we could use these funds for this project. One other provision in here that, that's something else that would help also to ensure funding. Some of you are aware that, you know, there was also in here rescinding an allocation for the Strawberry Fields project. That was a project we were not able to come to a final agreement with the developer on. So rescinding that also removes that obligation and provides, ensures that the funding's there in, in the downtown TIF for this. One last point I would make is just, again, there's, there's many, the, the intent would be that the team would purchase the land and donate that as their contribution. There's still many other steps that this has to go through. The, the, the design has to happen, still has to go through the MAPS4 process with the committees and the advisory board. The estimated timeline would be, would be that design would be, be in this year, construction potentially starting at the end of 2025, early 2026. This, though, is just an allocation of the funding. It's essentially an allocation to ourselves as the city, so that it's, it's not tied to a specific entity, it's not tied to, to this team. There's still many other steps that would have to happen. There are things that would have to happen with the land agreements, the operator agreements, the lease to the team, et cetera. But this would provide, you know, a pretty strong signal and provide funding that there's out there to make this a viable professional stadium. So with that, be happy to answer any other questions.
Well, I may just jump in to say, this is, although as you say, many steps, there's always many, many more steps. This is the culmination today of two years of conversations. I want to thank you and Craig and the team for being a part of that and putting a lot of work into this, you know. As you've just said, but I just kind of want to drive home this point, you know, we're solving sort of three issues here. We're citing the stadium, which had no funding in MAPS, and we're doing so with a, with a donation, which is much appreciated, and we thank the team for that, for that pledge. We're, we're providing a catalyst for a undeveloped but critical property here in downtown Oklahoma City. We're doing it through TIF, which is typically what TIFs are for. And, and we're enhancing a project that was kind of arguably always a little below the standards that our residents expect. $40 million is a Texas high school stadium, as I've said before, and other venues, you know. And, and I think we've always hoped we could do a little better than that. And again, to do it from a source that doesn't really take away from core city functions is, is all the better. So thank you for your hard work on this, Kenny. Any questions or comments?
I, I have a comment, actually. First, I will say, you know, I think we're all excited about the possibility of being able to support the home team in this effort, and again, to what we've already heard, the revitalization of this part of our community that, that we, we need that investment for. I will say my, my whole difficulty with these types of, of projects, as far as MAPS projects are concerned, specifically MAPS4 projects, is the fact that we prioritize certain projects in comparison to others. And I say that because as we work through how we were able to find all of this extra funding for this particular project, I have a project right now that is struggling to be built as far as ensuring that they get that to the finish line and have the funding that it needs to be supported as it opens. So being able to be creative in these types of, of ways, I would hope that we use that same energy for other projects as we move forward with opening and the stabilizing, the stability of these certain projects, because we are taking a gamble on all of these things because they're new for our city. They're important for our city. But I, I do not want us to neglect the fact that there are still quite a, a very important projects that people have asked for, that still need high support, that need higher funding, that need other and more creative ways of how we support those projects. And I think it's also important for us to, as we heard, it was just kind of rolled over about this Strawberry Fields project, that the fact that, that was something that quite, there were a few of us that were, that were quite skeptical of that project, of us funding and granting that much funding. And now here we are, rescinding that. So I, I don't want us to forget where we are in those conversations, and how, again, we have smaller projects that need just as much support, not necessarily as much funding, but at least support. And we can't give those projects the support they need to leverage to ensure that they are able to get started. So I mean, that's where I am. But again, this is going to be my catalyst for how, how we move as far as my project that I am very passionate about for MAPS4.
I just want to say, Kenny, Bob, Tim McLaughlin, there's been a lot of hard work put into this project. I, I know you guys are going out on a limb a little bit, but we appreciate all the hard work. We appreciate what you're trying to accomplish. I know last year I got to go tour the soccer arena in Kansas City near Oberlin, and it's incredible what it's done for that city. And so I'm keeping my fingers crossed, and I'm hoping we get to the finish line sooner rather than later. Thank you.
It's, it's interesting that the mental health component and this project appear on the docket at the same time. When I won the seat initially, I was still a middle school teacher in that May, as MAPS4 conversations were ramping up, I was showing the images of the stadium to my seventh and eighth graders at Jefferson, and I said, "What do you think?" And they're like, "Well, we love it." And I was like, "Let me ask you, though, which would you prefer, mental health or a soccer stadium?" Now, you need to understand, these kids love soccer. Like, this is a, this is biblical for them. And they said, "Well, mental health." And those were seventh and eighth graders. They prioritized mental health over the multipurpose soccer stadium. And then it turned out we were able to do both. And so to see them on the same agendas is, it's, I hope some of those kids are aware of what's happening today. To Councilwoman Nice's point, though, when we had a recent Citizens Advisory Board meeting for MAPS4, and at that meeting, it became clear that there was confusion around whether or not our sidewalk, bike lane, trails, and streetlights project included streetscapes, because there was confusion over the language that we had there, where we said placemaking, which are interchangeable, right? Streetscapes and placemaking are the same sorts of things. And then it became clear that there are funding concerns, right? Because inflation didn't exist when we created MAPS4, as we just heard from Kenny. So to Nikki's point, I would hope, not just hope, I will be advocating, in fact, and I'd like some, like, guidance from Economic Alliance, from planning, from Director Todd's office, City Manager's office, as it relates to ensuring that the identified streetscape placemaking projects in MAPS4, Capitol Hill, Britton District, Stockyards, Clara Looper Corridor, Windsor, that these places don't just get pennants, like, just little scraps. We need to make sure that the same sort of magic we were able to bring to the energy here, let me back up, the same sort of energy we were able to bring to this proj, thank you for laughing at that, the same sort of creativity we are able to bring here to this project, this MAPS4 project that meant so much to those middle schoolers, we need to make sure we're bringing that same sort of creativity to the streetscape projects identified in MAPS4. So my challenge is, is it TIF? Or is it money in the next bond? But my worry about pulling money from the next bond to complement what we've approved in MAPS4 for those streetscapes. And if you're unsure what I mean by streetscapes, I mean, go look at the construction right now underway in the Paseo District, where we're making the area more ADA accessible, wider sidewalks, you know, art, landscaping. Go look at 39th and, and Penn, the LGBT Route Six Historic District. We cannot shortchange these projects because of inflation or because of a, an initial misreading of, of that resolution. And I worry if we turn to the bond to supplement that funding, we are have, we have so many bond projects that are unlisted. We have so much in terms of needs there. I, I don't feel so comfortable drawing from there. So is a TIF the answer there? And so that's what I mean. We need to be creative. And I'd like to learn over the next couple of months, what is the plan? Those are very important rehabilitation projects for areas long left behind and quite historic to this city, and important to its economic vitality. The better those areas are walkability and bikeability to the neighborhoods around them with commercial developments within them, that is with commercial developments within them, that is sales tax dollars going into the coffers of the city government. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on this item? If not, we'll move on to A.D., which has a presentation. Mr. City Manager, this is on the MAPS-IV animal shelter.
Yes. David Todd will give us an introduction of this item, his preliminary report for the animal shelter project in MAPS-IV.
Very excited to bring you this much anticipated project. There's been a lot of press, and you've probably seen a lot of this, but we're going to give you a summary of what's in here, and this comes with great support from the subcommittee and the advisory board. So Todd Edmonds is here from HSE Architects to show you what all is included in this animal shelter, and remember, this is the preliminary report stage.
Thank you, David.
Thank you for having me here this morning. My name is Todd Edmonds, I'm a principal with HSE Architects. We're presenting to you, like David said, the preliminary report for the MAPS-IV animal This new facility will be located on the same site as the existing facility. So you can see here, in this existing site plan, all of the gray structures are existing to remain during construction. There's also a 19-foot drop in grade across the site from west to east. So with all of these challenges, we located the building to the north of the existing facility. You can see it here in this proposed site plan, the new building there to the north, the main entrance to the facility for the public will be off of Bryant, which is just to the east. This site is bordered by Grand Boulevard on the west, and then southeast 29th to the south. And then you can see there's a drive coming in off of Grand Boulevard, that drive will be for the staff and fleet parking. We located the barn and the pasture just to the south of the new facility, and then, as you can see here in Phase Two of this project, we will remove the existing facility but leave the existing parking there on the southeast corner, or southwest corner of Grand and 29th Street. That parking is in good condition and can be utilized for overflow events. There's a pet cemetery directly in the center of the site that's existing that will remain. There's also Humane Society Building just to the south of the pet cemetery. So here's a look at the first floor plan. The existing facility that's currently on the site is 45,000 square feet. This new facility will be approximately 70,000 square feet, 60,000 of that will be on the first floor. In order to help fit this building on the site, we moved about 7,500 square feet of office space to a second floor, and then we have a new barn that is about 2,800 square feet. So on the right-hand side of this floor plan, which is the east side facing Bryant, will be all of the public functions. In the bottom corner there will be a community meeting space, just north of that is the adoption area, north of that is the clinic, or, I'm sorry, the intake, and then on the very top northeast corner is the clinic and surgery area. All of the functions to the west of that are outdoor play areas and animal kennel areas. This plan provides about a 200% increase in area for dogs, as well as about a little over 100% increase area for cat kennels. And now, we'll look at some of these areas enlarged, you can see the key plan up in the corner. So what we're looking at here in the enlarged plan is the area that's outlined in red. So the bottom corner there is the meeting rooms, which can be blocked off at night and utilized by the public during after-hours events. These meeting rooms can be opened up with a movable wall in the middle for a large training event for dog training. Just north of that, in the lime green area, and all of the lime green to the left of that is all the adoption area. So it has a very large adoption lobby to allow space for large adoption events. We have kennels on one side for cats, the other side for dogs, and then there's a long north-south corridor there for dog kennels, and then there's an outdoor play area for the dogs, and then more dog adoption area for large dogs to the west of that. Next, we're going to look at the intake area, so this is where you would bring a dog for surrender or a stray animal. So we have temporary holding here for both dogs and cats. Once they are examined, they would be taken back to the dog and cat kennel areas, and you can see the cat kennel areas shown here in this plan. And then as you go down the long connecting spine to the west, it's all indoors, but there's a long corridor that goes along the entire kennel area. So these are the kennels that are on the north side of that corridor, and these are all dog kennels with a large storage area on the very far west for food and supplies. And then on the south side of that long corridor is more dog kennels and what we call the Sally Court. This is where the animal control officers will bring the stray animals and drop them off. So the last part of the plan is the very north end of the building, where we'll have the clinic and the surgery area, as well as sick animal holding and euthanasia. So here's a look at the second floor plan, everything in gray is looking down on the first floor plan, so the colored area is what will be on the second floor. And then here's an enlarged floor plan of that second floor area. This is primarily office space that overlooks down into a two-story lobby space for the adoption area. So it will be bordered with all glass around that lobby so that when you're on that second floor, you can look down into the adoption lobby. There's also a large employee break room for all the staff on this floor, as well as the animal control officer offices. And then here's a plan of the new barn, basically have six large animal stalls, a room for poultry, some storage, and a restroom. Here's a quick look at the exterior elevations, I'll talk more about finishes when we get to the renderings. This is the elevation facing to the east that you will see when you come in off of Bryant. And then here's the elevation looking from southeast 29th Street to the north. So here's a rendering looking at the main public entrance drive as you come in off of Bryant. As you can see, the meeting wing is to the very far left, and then the adoption area, and then intake, and then the clinic on the far north end. Here's a close-up looking at the adoption wing area, and so here you can get a better feel for the materials that we're proposing for this project. The majority of the material on the front of the building will be material what we call board-formed concrete. This is a poured-in-place concrete that uses wood planks to form the concrete, it leaves an impression of the wood, gives a nice texture and feel for the concrete. There will also be some wood accents at each of the entrance doors. We're also proposing tongue-and-groove cedar wood plank soffit at those covered entrances, and then some wood tresses with standing seam metal roof over really all of the pitched roofs. And then the brown material would be a stucco product, mainly used up on the second floor area. So here's a look at the adoption play yard, this is just behind the adoption dog area. You can see the dog kennels have an indoor kennel as well as an outdoor area. So if you're a visitor here and you want to look at an adoption dog, you can go out here into this play yard, they can let the animal out into the play yard, you can meet and greet the animal to see if it's a good fit for you. Here's an interior look at the adoption lobby as you come in the entrance. You can see we have cat kennels on one side, we'll have dogs on the other. You can also see this is the two-story lobby space, and you can see the administration, excuse me, office area on the second floor. And then here's another look in the same lobby, just looking back towards the entrance doors. We'll have hard durable surfaces everywhere throughout the facility, we'll have, in all of the public areas, we'll have polished concrete, and then in all of the animal kennel areas, we'll have a very durable epoxy flooring product. And then here's a look at the intake lobby, the intake and the clinic will be very similar, all similar finishes to the adoption lobby. And then here's a look at the cat habitats, this is just a typical cat habitat. And then we also have the dog kennels, there'll be several of these, dog kennel wings. The benefit of these kind of long, narrow wings is that we can have windows down both sides that allow natural light to come into these spaces, which is very good for the health and care of the animals. Second floor space, this is the administration conference room. All of the administration areas will also have hard durable surfaces. They typically have animals throughout the entire facility, even in the office areas, so no carpet anywhere, it's all very durable and cleanable surfaces. Here's a look at the budget, the current construction budget, including FF and E, is just under $32 million. Our preliminary project estimate is just under $31 million. So here's a look at the schedule, we're currently nearing the end of our presentation and approvals process. Once we receive notice to proceed, we will begin 120 days for final plans and specifications, and then after a short review period, it will go out to bid. We estimate that to be about a 30-day process. So hopefully by the end of this summer, we will break ground on the new facility. With that, I'll open for any questions.
It's exciting, thanks, Todd. Any questions?
Yes. First, I wish that the cat kennel was just projected always in city council chambers for my own well-being, and maybe the well-being of the city, but that's just my own thing. So I had brought this up at the MAPS-IV Citizens Advisory Meeting, and now I'm realizing, subsequently, I misread something on here. So the thing I brought up at the meeting, and I'm sure you recall this, and as I'm reading about our, it's just a memo we received, that Animal Welfare will be rolling out some new operational procedures to help them manage when they are at critical capacity. They plan to enact these policies within the next month or so. What I misread was there's a second unrelated item, where we're going to be bringing in RFP to council to hire a consultant to analyze something unrelated. My request is, I think we need to do something similar with animal welfare, because I think this plan that's in this memo is good, because it is talking about what do we do when we're at a capacity at which recently we are regularly, just, you know, it's not good. And so, in fact, you know, I just want to identify this for everyone. So part of the reasons why we're experiencing what this memo calls an overcrowding crisis, here are the factors. Financial constraints that prevent people from adopting, spaying, neutering, improperly caring for pets, a lack of access to veterinary care, a lack of affordable housing that accommodates pets, and overbreeding. However, this is not just a local thing, adoptions are flatlining or down in shelters all over the country, and cost to support overpopulated shelters is increasing. When this came to council initially, as part of MAPS-IV, the idea was that the more space we have, right, the more housing we can do of our pet community, and thus help reduce the need for euthanasia. But that's only one component, and without enough staff to do the successful spay and neutering program, the capture and release program that exists in our city, without that component too, we're always going to be in this endless cycle, right? And for someone like me, it's a heartbreaking cycle, I just, it is truly devastating. And when I say success of our spay and neutering, capture and release program, I would remind everyone that a year ago, during our budget process, when our Development Services Director stood where you're standing right now, I had mentioned that from knocking doors during the reelection, behind the Windsor Bowling Alley on 23rd and Meridian, there were kind of a colony of pets, of cats that had been discarded in a cul-de-sac there. And Director Wickencamp got his crew with John Gray, and they went out there, and they were successfully able to spay and neuter that entire colony. I think one little rascal kept getting away, but, you know, you can't have utopia, what are you going to do? But this was a very successful endeavor, but without the staff, we can't do that. And I received an email over winter break where someone was complaining about the dogs running around in their neighborhood, Director Wickencamp's going out there to deal with that, but no sooner than that email happened and he's dealing with that, then, you know, I go to Burger Pank over on Walker and 30th, and I run into constituents, and like, "Well, 29th and Walker, there's a bunch of cats under a house that are running around." So it's always like whack-a-mole. And so I would like to know, heading into this city budget, this discussions this year, I know we're talking about having to reduce services, but as we're talking about that, we need to play a long game of chess here. What are we doing to increase staff to be able to increase the spay and neutering, capture and release program? And that's just me saying that it's staff, and that's why I mentioned the consultant idea, like, someone smarter than me could be studying this for us to make sure that we're not just throwing money at a thing, right? But getting it right, I just think is so, so important, and we have all of these factors that are getting in the way. And I think a lot of, I know a lot of residents, when they were championing this new animal shelter, were doing so for the stated purpose of reducing that euthanasia number, so I don't know what's possible.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's something we can certainly work with the staff and have some conversations, they're constantly looking at best practices in this area to see what we can do to be better, but it really is, I think you've described it, it's a community issue, there's many different facets, ways that we attack this, and ways we work against it, or work to address it. And so I want to visit with the staff a little bit and see what their thoughts are on that, and I'll get back with you.
Thank you so much, City Manager, and thank you again for your work, this is really great.
All right, thank you. All right, well, that concludes the items that had been pulled out for separate discussion. If there's no further comment, we could adopt the consent docket except for Item G, which we would propose to return to a little later. So this is a motion and a second to adopt the consent docket except for Item G. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, now we're on Item 10, the concurrence docket, and we have Items A and B we can take with one motion. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, Item 11, our items requiring separate votes, we'll begin with Item 11A. This is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 13500 North Midwest Boulevard from AA to PUD 1950. It also has an amendment to the master design statement, and it is also tied to the item from the consent docket, Item G. There was 76% protest. Councilwoman Nies, I leave it to you to decide in what order and how this is approached. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Let me say, this has been a tedious process to get us to this point. So I will ask, I see Mr. Work is here, Mr. Box, please come forward, and as you see, there are amendment changes, can you help us to understand what those changes are? I'm personally looking at those changes, and I'll just show you all, it's a full page of amendments as of the revisions to January 15th, which is yesterday. So we've been doing some work up until yesterday to get us to this point today, so I would like to hear what those changes have been, and the communication between you all and our neighbors that have asked for these changes.
Yes, David Box, 522 Call Cord Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, Joel Bryant, who is the applicant, is also here with us. So after the Planning Commission vote, which was a recommendation for approval, my client and the neighbors re-engaged in conversation, and we've spent the better part of the last month and a half, maybe two months, primarily focused with the neighbors and my client on additional changes, and as the councilwoman pointed out, you know, this And as the councilwoman pointed out, you know, this entire page of changes was after the planning commission recommended approval of this item. So changes range from how density is defined, to how access is defined, how open space is defined, the requirement of retention or detention ponds on the site, how the width of the driveways that each lot would have, the amount of concrete that each driveway would have. So it's been a very extensive process, and as the councilwoman indicated, as recently as yesterday, we were still making revisions. And so we do have a revision to the PUD that's dated January 15th, 2024. And yes, I see that there is protest. It's worth noting that the two main objectors, Mr. Kurt Whitman, who owns the property at the northwest corner of the intersection, and Ms. Horton, who owns the property directly west of us, are represented by Mr. Work. My understanding from email correspondence as of this morning is Mr. Work is going to state that they are in agreement with the January 15th, 2024, including the revised exhibits, and are accepting of its approval. Obviously, there was a holiday yesterday, so withdrawing of protests wasn't able to occur, if any, but significant effort has taken place on behalf of my client and also the neighbors to get us to the point where we have now a significantly revised PUD and exhibit to reflect all of the changes that the neighbors have asked. I don't know whether or not there's a single issue that remains. I believe that my client has worked hard to agree to almost everything that has been asked of him by the neighbors, which is reflective, reflected in this January 15th, 2024 PUD.
All right, thank you so much. Mr. Work?
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman, and Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Kelly Work. My address is 105 North Hudson, Suite 304, and I am here on behalf of a group of the surrounding neighbors to this PUD 1950 that gathered together to respond to it. And I was engaged after the planning commission decision, a recommendation was made, and as Mr. Box indicated, since that time, we have been engaged with the applicant to reach now an agreement on the terms of the PUD, and those are reflected in the January 15th, 2024 version of the master design statement, and then also a revised Exhibit B, both of which, both of those were submitted to the city clerk and to staff yesterday afternoon. So we can say that we are ready and willing for the PUD to go forward for approval with the amendment to include the January 15th, 2024 revised master design statement and the revised Exhibit B. And I do want to also express our appreciation to the council and to Councilwoman Nice for allowing the time for this process to move forward. It really did give us an opportunity to reach this result with an agreement on the terms of the PUD. We do appreciate that. And so I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. We're not aware of any remaining protest. We think that we have been in communication with most, if not all, of the neighbors surrounding that were interested in this matter, and we believe that we do now have an agreement that represents most, if not all, of the surrounding neighbors. But thank you for your attention. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you so much. So as you can hear, it took us over a month to get here to this, to this space where we can say we can move forward. I just have two comments before we move through this. One, I do want to take the time to say thank you to Mr. Work and to Mr. Box, as well as the developer for his graciousness that he extended to compromise through this process because he didn't have to. So I will say that. My other comment is, I, one of the, one of the folks that was very vocal in the protest, I want us all to understand that this person owns property that is adjacent to this current property, and his property is zoned AA. So we're going to see this, in my opinion, this is a litmus test to see what happens. With us going through this process, I hope, again, that the neighbors are very interested once this comes to us as much as they were for this with their neighbor, because it's very unfortunate that we had to go through all of these changes from the planning commission process to here. I'm glad we were able to come to a resolve, but it's very unfortunate that we had to go through all of that to get here. So those are my comments, again, to the property owner. I again, hope that you understand that if you decide to do this same process with your property, that you will be subjected to this same process, I would hope, from the neighbors, when and if that time does come. So with that, I will ask that we move forward with accepting the evaluations or the master design statement as of January 15th, 2024. And, thank you, and accepting Exhibit B with this master design statement. Okay, all right.
Bring that up for a motion. We have a motion and a second on the amendment. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you, and I will move that we accept this approval for the recommended application change.
All right, so this is a motion for item 11A2, the ordinance on final hearing. This does require seven affirmative votes. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously and with the required seven votes. And now, do you want to go back to item from the consent docket, item G?
Yes, please. Again, I wanted to make sure all of these things work together, so I appreciate you all being able to go back to this, so I will move for the approval of that item.
That is item 9G.
Yes, thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Now on to item 11B. This is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, rezoning 306 Northwest 63rd from SPOD 503 to SPOD 1580. Councilman Cooper.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Has anyone signed up to speak?
Nope.
Do you want to speak? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Marshall Hamra, address is 5623 Northwestern Avenue, Suite B. I'm here on behalf of Bill Shadie, the owner of the property. The current SPOD is zoned general office. We're selling it to a chiropractor, and that does not account for medical. So really, the only change is we're adding the use of medical office.
Yeah, and I just wanted to thank you all, just talking with me about the area in general, and then further up as well. So anyway, just wanted to know that, been thinking about the infrastructure needs from 63rd all the way up to Wilshire and Britton, so still on my mind. But for now, one chunk at a time, we'll move for approval here.
Thank you.
Motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, item 11C is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval to close a portion of a north-south alley in Block 2 of Orchard Park Edition near Main and Klein. Councilman Hammond?
Yes, I will move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Councilman Stone, have you voted? Okay. Passes unanimously. All right, item 11D is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval, closing a portion of South Drexel Avenue and north of Southwest 157th. Councilman Hinkle.
Has anybody signed up to speak?
They have not.
Can we move this to the end of the docket, so Chris and Mike have to sit out there? I'll move approval on this.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thanks for your patience and your service, Representative. All right, 11E is an ordinance on final hearing establishing 60-degree angle parking within a setback parking area on the north side of Northeast 13th, near Lottie. Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, I'll just reference that these are the changes that are happening due to our bike walk OKC plan being implemented, and right now you can actually see some of these things happening. So you see some of the work happening in front of the Checkers Convenience Store, so I know they're probably relieved about some of these things as well. So I'll be moving for approval for all of them, but I know we have to go one by one.
All right, so first up is item E. Got a motion and a second. Passes unanimously. Item F is an ordinance on final hearing establishing 14 reserved parking spaces for the physically disabled on Lottie between 13th and 23rd. Councilwoman Nice?
Yes, move for approval, please.
Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item G is an ordinance on final hearing establishing a reserved parking space for the physically disabled on the north side of Northeast 13th, near Lottie. Councilwoman Nice?
Yes, I'll move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item H is an ordinance on final hearing establishing 60-degree angle parking within setback parking areas near Lottie and 13th. Councilwoman Nice?
Yes, I'll move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And finally, item I is an ordinance on final hearing establishing a reserved parking space for the physically disabled near 19th and Lottie. Councilwoman Nice?
I will move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11J is an ordinance on final hearing. This is the third of three meetings. Considering this proposed ordinance change, essentially, it amends the name of our finance director position to chief financial officer. We had a previous explanation of that and a public hearing, and today is final consideration if the council so desires. We can take a motion. Got a motion and a second. Passes unanimously. Item 11K is an ordinance to be introduced and set for final hearing on January 30th relating to nuisances, and we have a presentation.
Yes, Kalia Fisher with our municipal council's office is going to present this item regarding the ordinance on nuisance, public nuisance.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Kalia Fisher, Assistant Municipal Counselor. This ordinance is being introduced to amend the Criminal Activities Public Nuisance Abatement Ordinance, specifically Section 35-177, which pertains to the procedure used to abate public nuisances on or at real property. Generally, the state has granted broad authority to municipalities to declare what constitutes a nuisance and to abate nuisances. However, at State Statutes Title 50, Section 16, it provides that the nuisance abatement process should only occur after the property owner has been given notice and opportunity to be heard. And of course, when we hear those words, notice and opportunity to be heard, that means due process. While the existing ordinances provide some level of due process and notice to the property owner, the proposed amendments, under the proposed amendments, a property owner would also be provided the opportunity to be heard at an administrative level hearing. Essentially, the property owner will first be provided with a written notice and order that describes the property in question, that describes the criminal activity that is creating the nuisance, that orders the property owner to abate the nuisance, provides a list of measures to be taken to abate the nuisance, and a deadline to request an administrative hearing. If the property owner requests a hearing, then the city manager or his designee will conduct the hearing, and the proposed amendments also provide standards for that hearing officer to follow in conducting the administrative hearing, which will culminate in the issuance of a written order. We believe that these proposed amendments will bring the current ordinance into conformance with the state statutory requirement to provide due process. Does anyone have any questions?
I guess if somebody was dissatisfied with the administrative order that was issued, that their next course of action would be district court?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, please. Thank you.
All right, so if there's no further questions or comments, today's action that is called for is introduction, with a final hearing set for January 30th. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Final hearing is now scheduled for January 30th. Item 11L is an ordinance to be introduced, set for public hearing on January 30th and final hearing on February 13th. This is essentially known as our sign code.
Yes, yes.
There's obviously a very lengthy title here, but that's the gist of it, and we have a presentation. I know a lot of work has gone into this really for several years.
Yes, Lisa Cronister, our Assistant Planning Director, will present this item. She's been in the forefront of working through this, working with multiple different groups, and this will apply to items L and M.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Lisa Cronister, Assistant Planning Director. You may remember that we last brought the sign code to you in October 2022, at which point we were asked to address a couple of different issues related to some artists' concerns and some concerns from the ACLU about signs in the right-of-way, which we have since done. So we're bringing it back to you, but we're starting the process over in terms of introduction, public hearing, and adoption. So the past several years, we've been working on updates to all of the development codes. We will touch the entire zoning code, we'll look at the nuisance codes, and updating the sign code is part of that process. And the goal of the project is to implement the comprehensive plan, Plan OKC, which has several policies related to community appearance, and in particular to signs. Everything we do for the code update, we want to make sure we're making the development process easier to follow, easier to implement, easier to enforce. Next. So the proposed new sign code will, will, will address, much like the existing sign code, physical characteristics, size, height, where you can have a sign on your property, how big can it be, can it light up, how many can you have. The new sign code is largely organized around the street type, so busier streets, more heavily trafficked streets can have more signage, busier signage, taller signage, and quieter streets can have, are limited in the signs they can have. Next. Throughout 2020, 21, 21 and 2022, we did a lot of focus groups with residents, with artists, with sign industry, both outdoor advertising and attached and freestanding signs. We also met several times with the code update stakeholder advisory team to get their input. We've presented and gotten recommendations from all of the design review committees, as well as planning commission, and we also had a series of council briefings on certain topics. Next. So the new code. and we also had a series of council briefings on certain topics. Next. So the new code. There are many benefits to the new code. It will improve community appearance. Again, that was a key tenet of Plan OKC. The new sign code has increased definitions and process for the removal of dilapidated signs, and some language that will help code enforcement get those abated or removed sooner. Better tailored site, better tailored sign standards. We realized in our research that a lot of our sign area provisions are overly generous and not used, so we are proposing to reduce those. Have specific language that prohibits the use of PUDs and SPUDs to increase sign standards. That has been an issue that has come before council several times over the past several years. Streamlined murals approval process. By and large, most murals will not require a permit of any kind. If you're just painting on a wall that's not in a design review district, which is most of the city, you don't need a permit. You only need a permit if the sign is mechanically fastened to a wall, like to a substrate, instead of directly onto the wall, if it's three-dimensional or if it lights up. The new sign code is organized and is easy to follow at tables that condenses the information, makes it easier to locate. More benefits, our neighborhoods would have an increased distance from EMD signs, that's electronic message display signs, and then shorter, smaller billboards in certain districts. Next. So as an overview, the new, this ordinance will establish a new Article 16 that will be located in Chapter 59, which is the zoning code, so a new article that will replace Article 5 of Chapter 3, Chapter 3 being the existing sign code. It identifies and describes and permits six different types of signs, and a lot of provisions have been moved over from the existing code with various minor changes for clarity. Next. So to talk more in depth about two of the changes, biggest changes made since October 2022, next. So murals, like I said, most murals will not require a permit, so paint away is what we've told the mural artists, who were thrilled to hear that. Again, you only need a signed permit if you're mechanically fastening to the wall, if you're three-dimensional, or if you have electrical components. Arts Commission review is only required for 1% for arts projects, and if you're in a design review district, you will still need design review approval, but we've clarified that staff has the authority to make those approvals. Again, that should vastly shorten the time and cost of the approvals process. And we allow additional text area under various conditions. Okay, next. Signs in the right-of-way. So right now, no signs are allowed in the right-of-way, except for, you know, no parking signs and speed limit signs. No signs are allowed. In response to ACLU concerns about free speech, that the right-of-way is a forum for free speech, we've crafted a process, working with Development Services, both plan review, code enforcement, and licensing, to allow them by purchasing a permit in the form of a color-coded sticker. So the stickers are good for one month. You can purchase as many as you need at a time, you can purchase them in advance for all the colors of the year, and then the only requirement is that the signs that are posts that are placed have to have the sticker. The next item on the agenda is an amendment to Chapter 60, which will establish the fee for the stickers. Okay, so those are the benefits. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just want to say, Lisa, I've watched this go on for a couple of years now, and the transparency, the input from so many different people. You've really worked hard on this. We also had a United States Supreme Court case that came up in the middle of this, which slowed things down, but great job, very proud of what you've accomplished with this.
I want to echo that. What is it, three years going on? Four? Congratulations.
County.
Well, I was, I was planning commissioner when we started this, and you guys did a great job of engaging with everybody who had a thought, and thank you very much, because you
Thank you.
what you came up with is very fair and very usable, from a sign guy's point of view.
Okay, great. I just want to echo what I've, what has been said in participating in some of those calls. I know there have, we had a lot to discuss, that's for sure. So I do have a couple of questions as we look through, through what you have presented. There was one about the murals signage, as far as the staff being able to approve. What does that process look like? Because my only concern is if there may be staff that may not understand the mural, if they are approving it, or what does that approval process entail?
Yes, so in design review districts, all exterior improvements, except for ordinary maintenance and repair, need a certificate of approval, and there are thresholds for committee approval and for staff approval. So a staff approval is not relative to what the mural looks like or its content. It's relative to whether or not it's on a previously painted surface, because all of the design review districts have regulations about not painting on unpainted surfaces. So that's what staff is looking for, and they're also looking to see if the mural is obscuring architectural detailing, because a lot of the guidelines have to do with preserving architectural detailing. So that's mainly what staff is looking for, not for anything about the style or the color.
Okay, that's very helpful. I appreciate that. My second question, I know this was brought to me not long after I was elected to office, but, and maybe you can help me understand where it is included as far as a category, but I had some churches that were concerned and wanting signage, and they had been restricted previously from being able to place the signage in certain places.
Yes, because a lot of churches are zoned R1, and R1 is the most restrictive, generally speaking, in terms of the, how signs can be illuminated, how big they can be, how many there can be. And we did address that. I will have to get back to you on exactly where it is.
No problem. I appreciate that, but if, as soon as you give me that, that'll be helpful, so I can pass that along to some of our churches. I appreciate that. And then I'll save my, my next question for M, for the next, as far as the pricing. So I know we're dealing with L now, or I can ask it now, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, go, go ahead.
Okay. As I read, the new fee being $25 per permit, it says each permit will cover multiple signs. Is there a minimum or maximum of signs?
No, that's intended, like, for, for each applicant would pay the $25 for their permit, and under, like, my permit, I can get however many signs. But, and then I'm charged for the cost per sticker.
The cost, and it's 25 cents per sticker? I think, well, for me, I think that's going to be an issue, not, you know, as we're dealing with folks who may have, depending on what they're trying to, if they're running for office, and they have limited funding for their campaign, using that fund, those funds for, for signage to actually, because you have to pay for the sign itself, and these signs are not cheap to be placed wherever you place them, especially depending on the types of sign that you get. So now being charged an extra 25 cents, well, 25 and an extra 25 cents per sign is, is a concern for me, looking at the limitations and barriers for those who may be working to use those funds in other places. That could be more helpful for them to get out their message. So that, I will say, for me, that is, that's a concern. I mean, I understand what we're trying to do, but at the same time, I'd hate for us to put a barrier on folks coming out the gate of being able to do that.
Yeah, and, yeah, the, the fees were set to cover costs, they weren't set to profit from.
And I understand that, but, you know, at the same time, if you're running for office, you, you're raising funds to cover the cost for signs, in relation to now being charged to place them. So that's, if you understand, that's where my concern is.
Charge doesn't count in somebody's front yard, does it?
No, these are only signs in the right-of-way.
The right-of-way.
So yes, you can have however many.
You can go through a neighborhood and put a sign in every front yard, and it doesn't cost you anything. It's just in the right-of-way signs, and there's no limitation on size, then?
There, there is a limit on, in the right-of-way, there's a limitation on size. It's your standard. It's 18 by 24, your standard.
18 by 24, yeah, or smaller?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'll say, I always understood that to be right-of-way. I understand, I mean, we can post however many signs we want in our own yard, but just again, as, as we've even seen this last campaign cycle, or election cycle, all of the signs that were in rights of ways, and just within our, our city and our community that are still up, that those, those costs can, can go elsewhere. That's just how I feel about that.
I have another question. Is this going to be available to anybody now to get a sign permit, or do you have to be a licensed contractor to apply for your signs in the, in the right-of-way?
I will check. I think the intent was that
Anybody could.
whoever could do it, but I'll make sure that's clear.
Okay.
You have questions? If not, we could begin consideration. It's actually introducing a couple of different items today. The first would be item L, introduced and set for public hearing on the 30th and final hearing on February 13th. Got a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously, that is introduced. And then we have item M. Similarly, this is for introduction today, public hearing January 30th and final hearing February 13th. This relates to the fees. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously, the item is introduced. All right, that brings us to item N. This is the public hearing regarding an ordinance that was previously presented regarding FEMA maps. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not, so we will close the public hearing in advance to the next public hearing on item O. O1 is a public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed, and we do have someone who has signed up to speak. Arnell Williams?
Arnez.
Arnez. It looks like this is relative to item A, 709 Northeast 3rd.
Yes. Ms. Williams, I know she's here, and this, I want you all to, last, a couple weeks ago, at our last meeting, I asked that we defer this item, and come to find out, as soon as our meeting was over, Ms. Williams came to my office, but that was because she was, she did not know where to go. She was in 420 and didn't realize where the meeting was, so I agree, I thank you all for allowing us to do that. When she did come in my office, we talked about what her resolve could be as far as being able to revitalize and rehabilitate this particular property. Today, she did come in my office, and Mr. Chad was also in my office, and we talked about what she has done thus far. So I know as far as what we have seen from those pictures, there has been great improvement as far as it does not currently look like this, whereas Ms. Arnez, Ms. Williams has, and I hope you don't mind me speaking for you.
No.
Okay, because she's very, she's very reserved, so we've been talking and trying to figure this out and help her as much as we can, within our ability. So what she has done, she does have right now a roofing estimate, and she's waiting on a couple of more estimates for her property, and I will ask, and, and for her, if we can, look at deferring this for just two more weeks as she looks and works on, she's working right now on a couple of more estimates, excuse me, I couldn't think of the word, estimates with other roofing companies. And the one roofing company that she does have, it does say at the bottom of it, she sent that to me, and Mr. Chad, unfortunately, today was his first time seeing that, that the work could begin in March, but that is also dependent on some other factors pertaining to this particular property. So I will ask that we'd help and assist Ms. Williams, because she has reached out to us for some assistance, and did you have that sheet to show us what it looks like currently, at least so some of, if some council members want to see it in comparison to those pictures, at least they will be able to, to make that comparison and to see that she has worked to do what she can to make improvements for this particular property. So I'll, if you'll bring that to me, I'll ask again, as we look at this, in comparison to what has been done, that we look at just two more weeks while we look and assist Ms., Ms. Williams to give her time to look at the things that she can do within her power to get the full estimate. So I did talk to Mr. Chad about what we were going to ask, and, and he, he understood for us to, to work in, in the process of helping to assist Ms. Williams with this opportunity. And Ms. Williams is here, if anyone has any questions. If you have some ways that we can assist her, please, by all means, let me know, or let her know if you have information that we can do that, because I believe that this, this is something that we can all work on together. Unfortunately, with some things that, programs that we have within our city that we offer, some, some of them have barriers and limitations as well, to where everyone is not able to be a part of that process, and unfortunately, right now, that includes Ms. Williams.
And I'm sorry, did you say you're going to make a motion to defer?
Yes, please.
Is it how long?
Just two weeks.
Okay.
And she's going to continuously work with Mr. Davidson on the updates, and, and I'll be in touch with Mr. Davidson as we continue to, to work through this for the next two weeks.
All right, well, let's bring that up then. A motion to defer, item 1101A. Got a motion and a second, cast your votes. This is for two weeks. Passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Williams, we'll be updated. Thank you.
All right, no one else has signed up to speak under the public hearing, so we will close in advance to the resolution found at O2, declaring that the structures are dilapidated, save for that item previously deferred. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. P1 is a public hearing regarding the unsecured structures here listed, except for those previously struck. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not, and so we will advance to the resolution found at P2, declaring that the structures are unsecured, except for those previously struck. We have a motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. At 11Q1, Councilwoman Nice, we have that item again. Would you like to defer it as well?
Yes, please.
So this would be a deferral of 11Q1D for two weeks. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. That item is deferred, and it passes unanimously. Amy, has anyone? Amy, has anyone else signed up to speak under this public hearing?
No, they haven't.
They have not, and so we will advance to the resolution found at Q2, declaring that the buildings are abandoned, except for those previously struck or deferred. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11R1 is the second public hearing regarding a resolution amending the June 20th, 2023 resolution approving certain fire and other sales tax expenditures for this fiscal year. This was previously presented. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak under this public hearing?
No, they haven't.
So we can advance to the resolution found at R2, amending the June 20th, 2023 resolution approving certain fire listed and fire other sales tax expenditures, et cetera. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right. Item 12, comments from council, Ward 2. Ward 3?
Ward 4? Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
I would just like to briefly talk about the decision on the property to relocate the county jail. And I wanna start off by saying that, I mean, no ill will against anybody, that the committee that's been working on this thing, I know they've been working their tails off, the county commissioners, they're certainly in a rough spot. Because no matter what location they decide on, they're certainly gonna get a lot of heat for it. The only thing I think maybe that I would like to see a little differently is if, as the city, I know the city projected out some locations to the county saying, we think these are potential locations that could possibly work. And I would, I know personally, I would just like to see kind of the, the metrics on each one of those locations, where we kind of highlight the issues that we're looking at as we look at those properties. For instance, distance to downtown. I'd like to see that documented. You know, closeness to schools, closeness to parks, is public transportation available? All those different things that, that we talk about, number of, or maybe in relation to residential areas. Just some of those concerns and things that we talk about on each site, just to kind of have them documented there. Because, you know, every location is, well, this won't work, it's too close to schools, it's too close to residences. And I would just love to really see the actual numbers on that as we move forward. I mean, I keep hearing about, you know, well, there's a lot of political influence going on and this and that. To me, it's, it's not, and shouldn't be a political thing. It's more of a, what is actually gonna work best for the county, but also what is gonna work best for our residences. And I just, I would kind of like to see those measures whenever we propose a potential site, honestly, and that's it. And I know the city looks that and works hard on that. I just, I would love, especially when I get invited into conversations myself, to have those kind of actual measurements.
So I'll contact the county and see if we can't get that more specific. I would tell you, when we went out and did that research and looked at different properties, there were some parameters they gave us, but I wanna make sure that I narrow in on these and get the exact, but I'll tell you, generally, the parameters that they gave us at the time was 30 to 70 acres. Their preference is more to allow them flexibility for expansion. The zoning, there's a preference that it be more like a light industrial, and I think part of that was the indication of like what's around it already, but it's not a requirement. And any site that is selected within the city boundaries will have to have some type of spec, will have to have a special permit, so we know that, even if it's zoned industrial, that utilities exist or that they have direct access to utilities. It's 10 to 15 minutes downtown, and I've heard this described as miles versus minutes, but I wanna make sure of that and clarify that. We were looking at 10 to 15 minute drive from downtown, that it's near a highway or major infrastructure like an arterial street where the access is easier, and then consideration of the buffer from residential and schools. But I'll see if I can't get more specifics on that, reaching out to the county and working with them.
I appreciate that, because it's, and I was wondering too, like, we keep, I keep hearing them talk about miles, but I'm like, really, it has more to do with time, I think, than it does actual mileage. And then talking about public transportation, different things like that. I know when the airport was brought up, the Airport Trust land, and that seemed like it would have been a pretty decent location until the FAA kind of put the nicks on that. But I don't know, I think the minute piece of it would be a lot more interesting than mileage. And also the condition of the land in terms of, is half of it in a floodplain or not?
Right. But I think the minutes issue, the challenge with that, and I think there's still calculations you can make, is like, depending on the time of day, and that's where I think they're looking at like access to highways or arterials, so that you have the immediate access, you know, if you're in an area that you've gotta go a distance to get to an arterial or to a highway, that's definitely gonna add time, even though your miles might be good. So I think it's kind of a mixture of both, just because that measure of minutes is a little bit of a challenge.
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, in addition to Councilmember Stone's request, I'd like to see those same metrics that he's requesting on the existing county jail.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I thank God you two are saying what you're saying. I think this is such an important conversation and the metrics that you're requesting, I think, are wonderful. If I may, I'd like to add, I find it horrifying that anyone would talk about expansion. We have leaders from Clay Bennett to the Chamber of Commerce to you name it, who have done so much advocacy and work for well over a decade, well over a decade, toward criminal justice reform and addressing mental health and reduction of people incarcerated in that jail. So the idea that we're all talking about, that anyone is talking about expansion of anything related to that jail, other than reducing our ACE scores and the adults who have those scores, I, I, that is, that is truly baffling. That, that is, you identify, you, excuse me, when you have a problem, you identify the problem, you identify why it's a problem, and then you identify the solutions. And the idea of expanding a footprint flies in the face of every bit of data-driven research the city has done, the Vera folk have done. I just don't understand that. So when these metrics conversations come back, I'd like a really clear understanding of why anyone is talking about expansion and what expansion's talking about. I've been hearing numbers where, you know, we're talking about building a jail with over 2,000 capacity in it. Why? Why would we do that? Two, Maps 4, if I recall, and this is a metric I would like to see, it's not just that downtown is important, but Maps 4, as we recall, voters approved, this council helped create, a diversion hub, a new diversion hub. I'd like, to me, the idea that we would construct a facility to incarcerate people at a far remove from that diversion hub, undercuts the work of the diversion hub, right? So what are we asking people to work at the diversion hub and then drive out to, you know, you know, wherever, to go pick up people? Like, that just, that just undercuts the important work that this council has done, the business community has done, civic leaders have done. I just don't understand that. It is a truly baffling thing. So I'd like very specifically to know how any location relates to, proposed location relates to access to the diversion hub. And I just really wanna double down on what I heard from Councilwoman Peck and Councilwoman Stone, in terms of the access to services, period, right? Access to homelessness services. I'll conclude by saying this, we were having this conversation, some friends on the drive back from the cabin this weekend. You know, I'm sure you all heard the same news I did, there is a man who sat on death row in this, this state. And when he was found to be exonerated, and then the state, our state, my birthplace, the birthplace of many of us here, released him. And when he found himself released, he had cancer. What he did not have was access to any services. The state of Oklahoma did not get this man access to any sort of stabilizing force in his life. If we are serious about being tough on crime, then why would we put someone who's been incarcerated alongside people who have murdered and raped and pillaged and these sorts of things? Why would we let that person out who was exonerated and give them access to nothing in terms of stabilizing their life? What do we think that sets them up for? So, yeah, I just cannot thank Councilwoman Peck and Stone enough for what they have said. So I'd like metrics specifically about access to homelessness services, the diversion hub, food, stabilization, the stabilization of someone who has been incarcerated, whether it's for a day, a week, a year, et cetera. So, hats off.
All right. Word 5? Word 6? Word 7?
Yes, just a couple of comments. I, I also want to say that this is, this has been a tiring process for all of us, I think, that have had locations that are included within the areas that we are a part of. And quite frankly, all of these sites are political. It's just who, who's going to be the one to put it there? And that's the unfortunate part of, of where we are. And also, understanding that these conversations are not fully happening with those who are a part of, of these communities, until it's already said that these are locations. And even afterwards, a lot of times you don't get that conversation that you need to say why. So those are, are great concerns for, for, for me, for sure, in, in how we say what's important to our city, what communities are important to our city. I mean, quite frankly, it has been said in meetings that I've sat in, that where the current location sits, people are still late to their appointments to district court. And the courthouse is a stone's throw from us in between where the, the current site is. So these are internal issues that really need to be filtered as we work through how we can keep it in it, in its existing location, in my opinion. Want to also say that we will have our Ward 7 Town Hall on January 23rd at the Mount Olive Baptist Church in their Family Life Center. So it's more of a gym that's attached to the church. So please, if you are able, it's gonna start at 6:00 PM and it's located off of 42nd, Northeast 42nd and Kelly. So very grateful for the pastor and the congregation for us to be able to have this conversation at this part of our community. I wanted to mention, I know yesterday it was very unusual to not be downtown celebrating and honoring the legacy and the 95th birthday of Dr. King. But all of those things have been postponed to January 27th as far as the parade. And Thursday on January 25th, that cross-cultural dinner and program will happen at Temple Benai Israel. And again, I will say, if you have not attended a program such as this, please make time to do so. And I think with this being on a separate day from the other events, that this is an important day for us to be able to, to commemorate the differences and also our familiarities of Dr. King and his, his struggle for equality that we are still fighting for in this present time. And, and hearing some of those speeches and watching some documentaries on yesterday, it's very unfortunate that all of those things are still very relevant in the times that we are a part of right now. And this young man said those speeches in the 1950s and the early 60s and the mid 60s. And we are over 50 years later, where you can literally just put those same words into conversations that are currently happening. The breakfast on the 27th, there's still the job fair, and you can visit and see more information on OKCMLKalliance.org. But please, let's prepare to ensure that we are supporting the legacy of Dr. King on a different day. I saw in DC that they still had their parade in the snow. And I know that's not something we're used to, and that's fine. But we'll be excited to see you all on, on January the 27th to honor his legacy. Thank you.
This weekend, I was reading my Friday newspaper, which is one of my favorite local publications. Two things jumped out at me. Barbara, number one, is Loves Travel Shops celebrating its 60th anniversary with a, a big affair with the Beach Boys. I wish I'd have been invited, but congratulations to Loves on the successful 60 years and thanks, I wanna thank Loves for all they do for Oklahoma City. Secondly, the second article was down in the bottom, and it announced that this year is the 50th year of OKC Friday. They're celebrating 50 years. I wanna thank and congratulate Vicki and Rose and the staff. I wanna remember Leland Gorley, who was a great editorial writer. This, this newspaper has been timely, it's been relevant, and it has played a big impact on things that have happened in Oklahoma City. There is a, a piece in it where Gordon Walker, a, a former employee, wrote, and I think this is very relevant. "One thing that Friday has always done well is to celebrate achievement in education, in business, in civic participation, and on the fields and courts of athletics. Friday editorials always encourage city leaders, civic giants, and decision-makers to dream big while employing readers to follow in support." Congratulations, Friday, on 50 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that concludes item 12. Item 13 is citizens to be heard. None have signed up to speak, which brings us to item 14, adjournment, and we are adjourned.